We gotta get the, we're on TV, so we gotta get it going on time. All right. Family, Coolianis's, your, can Coolianis's please sit down? That's what I'm saying, and they're the only ones standing up, so. Okay, I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of Tarpon Springs, Florida on Tuesday, July 22nd, 6:31 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Coolianis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
Commissioner D. Donato.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
So tonight, our reflection will be by Reverend Tori Huff from the New Spring Church. Thank you, Reverend. Everybody stand in, and immediately we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, and our City Manager for allowing this tradition to continue. I'd like to offer this blessing over this meeting tonight. Lord bless these city leaders, and their first responders, and our community members who are here and who are home. We ask your blessing over Tarpon Springs for prosperous businesses, community life, environmental protection, mental wellness, physical health, and overall well-being. Guide our leaders as they make decisions for our community. God, we ask you to open their hearts, their minds, their ears as they make decisions, and we ask all of this in your precious, precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, we're gonna do, we have four, we're honoring four different people. As you can see on our agenda, number one, we're gonna honor Mary Mijas Burris and Naomi Mijas Patterson, and then second, we will do some memoriams for some members of St. Pete College. What we're gonna do tonight, I'm gonna deviate a little bit from our normal procedures. I'm gonna allow, after the first presentation, I'm gonna allow for public comment, so family members can come up either here, or they can go to the podium, and they can say all the wonderful things that their loved ones deserve. So, you know, when I first, before being sworn in as mayor, I thought about honoring some people, and the first two names that came to my mind were Mary and Naomi. So, you know, they, you know, there's angels that live in heaven, and then there's angels that live among us, and these two ladies are angels that live among us. You know, they spent their entire, yes. They've spent their entire lives serving others. Our community would not be the same without them, and I'm gonna go through some of the things. The proclamation kinda goes through a lot of the, their contributions to the community, but I'm gonna highlight a few things and spell out, you know, some of the things that have touched me. You know, they, both of them, like I say, never stop giving, no matter who it is, you know, whether it's, if I'm at the bingo with Naomi, and I like a cookie, a galuti, or anything that I'm eating, she says, "You like it, Yanni?", and the next day, two trays come to my house, and I know I'm not the only one. Mary Burris has done so much for this community, it's countless, and, you know, they're always, they're always positive, you never see them that they don't have a smile on their face, they don't always welcome you, and life hasn't always been a bed of roses for either of them. You know, and Naomi had, you know, the worst tragedy any mother could ask, and you know what I'm talking about, and yet, I know, I'm not sure what I would do. I probably would just roll up and check out, but they didn't, because she has more family, more friends that love her, and she loves them, and she's always positive, and the same thing for Mary. Yeah, even at bingo, she's happy when somebody else wins, you know, and her thing is, "Yanni, you're on fire." So, let's talk about some of the things, you know, the Boys Club, you know, Mary, you know, I remember, and we got Chuck Farrell back there, the standard of the Boys Club, and then we got Nikki Jarakas, the kid of the Boys Club. I think the Boys Club raised you, I think. I remember when the Boys Club was at the, behind the fire station on Gulf Road, and it was a trailer, a little trailer, there was, I think, was there a foosball table in the trailer, and then there was a slab where you could play basketball, and the basket was about this high, which was nice, 'cause I could slam on these little kids. And then they got big, and then I quit playing, so, but they, you know, and then the Boys Club needed to grow, and Mary and Herman stepped up and gave what in today's dollars would be well over a million, millions of dollars, in today's dollars, to create the Boys Club that we have today. And again, you think about the countless lives that kids that could've been running the street and getting in trouble, instead, they had a place to go, and again, we've got some of our alumni here. And then, you know, at the hospital, Naomi, you know, one of my favorite books is called "The Mind Body Prescription", and it talks about the effects of your mind and your attitude on your health, and Naomi, you know, wasn't a doctor, Ellen, but she probably did as much to help people heal as anyone else. I could imagine, you know, her taking somebody to rehab and telling all the little jokes she would tell, and laughing with them, and they got better, and she, she is, again, one of the angels. Then the two of them started the Meals on Wheels in Tarpon Springs. It wasn't enough that they, the Boys Club, and then I'm gonna get to the Shepherd Center, I haven't got to that yet, but then they started Meals on Wheels in Tarpon Springs. So they were out there, you know, on their own time, on their own dime, raising money, doing all kinds of things to raise money, and then delivering meals to people shut-in. And when you think about, again, touching lives, you never know what one act of kindness does for somebody. Somebody who might have been so distraught that they could've done something terrible. But they would get a visit from these two angel ladies, and they'd bring food, and you know they stayed and talked to them, you know they held their hands, you know they showed them all the love that they needed at that time. Now let's talk about the Shepherd Center. So Mary starts the Shepherd Center in her own property, her own building, she decides, instead of getting rent, she decides she's gonna use her building to feed people and clothe people, and I don't know if Ada's here, Ada, did she, I invited, Ada, there you are. So, you know, I visited the Shepherd Center this last week with Ada, and I saw the good people that, you know, that this Shepherd Center serves, and, you know, and I'm guilty of it, you know, we detach ourselves from some of these people, but when you sit and meet them, you realize they're human beings that, just like you and I, except they're down on their luck, something happened, but they got a place to go, they got a place to go and get something to eat, to, you know, to clothe, and how many of them would've done something to maybe take their lives? But they didn't, and so even today, even though you two aren't as active as you were there, they're taking care of people because of the seed that you planted, you did that, and give a round of applause for that. So, you know, again, I, they were the most deserving people I could think of to honor. You know, we're gonna honor two other people who did wonderful work after this, but those people are gone. They're not gone, and I don't wanna wait to honor them later. I wish them many, many years, Honeypalaa, I wish them many, many years, but I wanna take that chance, and they deserve to be honored while their family can get up and say things about them, and I expect them to get up and say a few things. So, but before they do that, let me, let me read a letter here. "To the Honorable Mayor John Coolianis, the respected City Council Members and the citizens of Tarpon Springs. My dear Mary and Naomi, I greet you with love and joy in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Though I regret that my busy schedule prevents me from sharing this happy day, I hope that this letter serves as a reminder of the esteem and love I have for both of you. Apart from my own personal feelings of familiar, familia, love and affection, I was so pleased to hear you were officially being honored by the City of Tarpon Springs. Though I know that both of you would prefer to continue to fulfill your works of philanthropy without such a fuss, I am glad, for once, that your wishes are being ignored. To all those assembled in this great, at this great event, let my own words reflect that Mary Burris and Naomi Patterson are two angels who reside on earth. Like Abraham and Sarah, who were privileged to host angels because of their great hospitality, and like Mary and Naomi, not only opened their hearts to others, but also their homes, even in frail health, could not become an obstacle to a lifetime spent continuously giving of themselves and their resources. Mary is one of the founders of the Shepherd Center, and indeed, she has never stopped supporting those in need daily. Naomi was the life, joy, and hope of patients, doctors, and nurses at the hospital in the City of Tarpon Springs, giving emotional support, encouragement, and inspiration to others, feeding those who had no family to visit them. Christmas was never celebrated with their families, but rather spent with the homeless, delivering Meals on Wheels. My dear brothers and sisters of the City of Tarpon Springs and the whole Tampa Bay area, our lives are richer because of these two ladies, and it is up to us to continue their legacy. May our gracious Lord grant them many years full of health and joy, and may he multiply the gifts that they have given in their lives, both spiritual and earthly. I remain in love and service of our Lord. Metropolitan Sebastian." So, family and friends that wanna come up and speak, you can either come here, you can go there, so, Yotti, you're first.
I don't like this one that much. Thank you, thank you, Yanni, and thank you to the board for recognizing my grandmother and my aunt. Try to get this. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Yotti Coolianis, and I've been blessed with, I should go talk it into her, yeah. So, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Yotti Coolianis, and Mary and Naomi are my grandmother and my aunt, I was blessed with that, great blessing from God to be able to grow up with them in my life every day. You know, John mentioned a lot of things up here tonight, and that's not really, you know, what I, I mean, all the things they did is great, and, but for me, what truly defines them is what they've most profoundly instilled in us, their family, and everybody around them. They've shown us by example the true meaning of things like humility, kindness, generosity, empathy, charity, optimism, faith. But above all else, they've taught us the power of love. They've not just talked about living a Christian life, they've truly lived that every single day of their life, they've acted it out every day, in every interaction, in every act of service, in every act of kindness, in everything that they do, and they definitely demanded it of all of us as well. You know, as far as Meals on Wheels goes, Christmas morning, Thanksgiving, we all knew that we had to be there, either helping prepare or delivering, and I'm not gonna lie, sometimes I didn't show up, sorry, but, you know, we were supposed to be there, they wanted us there, that's for sure. You know, they just, they shaped generations, not just me, but my older cousins, my younger cousins, my nephews, they've really shaped us with their profound wisdom and the boundless compassion that they have in their hearts, and that they've showed to everybody who they've ever had any interaction with. Mamula Theiomi, tonight is a reflection of the countless lives you've enriched, the countless acts of goodness you've performed, and the profound legacy of service you've built. On behalf of our entire family, and on behalf of this community as a whole, I wanna thank you for your service and everything that you've done. I'm immensely proud, measurably proud, and deeply grateful for your beautiful lives, your beautiful souls, and the biggest blessing in my life has been having both of you.
Commissioner Kuyas, I know you've been close to the family, would you like to say something?
Oh, I'm just, we're so blessed to be able to honor these two women tonight, they've just countless decades of philanthropy in the community, these two have helped decorate the town of what Tarpon Springs is, and helping one another, rich history of love for this community, and as Mr. Yotti mentioned, that they've helped raise decades of us young men and women in the community, so I just wanted to recognize them too, and we all love you, and thank you so much, thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamations, and then I will allow for more comments. Okay, Naomi Mijas Patterson spent her career nursing at Advent Health North Pinellas Hospital for 56 years, and provided additional care to residents going beyond her regular duties by assisting with at-home dressing changes and rides to doctor appointments. Naomi dedicated years to patient care as a translator, fundraiser, and continuous volunteer at the hospital, and was referred by Dr. Fred Rover as the Mother Teresa of Tarpon Springs. Naomi was one of the original founders of the Tarpon Springs Ambulance Service, and Naomi served as a board member and significant fundraiser for the Tarpon Springs Boys and Girls Club, and Naomi co-founded the Shepherd Center and Meals on Wheels in Tarpon Springs along with her sister, Mary Burris. And Naomi was involved in fundraising efforts in the collection of clothing, educational materials, and medical equipment for those in need overseas. And the City of Tarpon Springs wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Naomi Mijas Patterson for her selfless dedication and valuable contributions to our community. Whereas we are proud to recognize Naomi Mijas Patterson for her, for the unwavering commitment to improving the lives of others in Tarpon Springs, demonstrating outstanding citizenship, and leaving a lasting positive impact on our community. Now therefore I, John Coolianis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby recognize an outstanding citizen of Tarpon Springs, Naomi Mijas Patterson. Mary Mijas Burris founded the Shepherd Center in Tarpon Springs, bringing together the churches and the community with a common goal of helping those in need, and along with her late husband, Herman, they provided the initial and substantial seed money to start this Tarpon Springs Boys and Girls Club. And Mary and Herman donated substantial money and land to the Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation. And Mary co-founded the Tarpon Springs Meals on Wheels along with her sister, Naomi. Mary played an integral role in the founding of the Tarpon Springs Historical Society, and the City of Tarpon Springs wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Mary Mijas Burris for her selfless dedication and valuable contributions to our community. And we are proud to recognize Mary Mijas Burris for her unwavering commitment to improving the lives of others in Tarpon Springs, demonstrating outstanding citizenship, and leaving a lasting positive impact on our community. Now therefore I, John Coolianis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby recognize an outstanding citizen of Tarpon Springs, Mary Mijas Burris. That's the most fun I've had since I've been mayor. So, would anybody else like to either come up to the podium, or they can come up here and have a few words, any words to say for these two well-deserved daughters of Tarpon Springs? Ada, okay, Ada? Hey, introduce yourself.
Thank you so much for inviting me. Well, what can I say about these two wonderful women? If it wasn't for you, there would be no Shepherd Center, okay? I came here, you know that I've been executive director now for almost 11 years, that way back, and when I came here, I came from Gainesville. And these two ladies just welcomed me with open arms and introduced me to the community, and just, you know, let me know what their vision was for the Shepherd Center, and I was always able to count on them. You know, that they still, to this day, participate in a program we call Project Thanks. Project Thanks gives out turkeys to people that are in need. And she gets her turkeys and constantly, still today, wheelchair and all, and she goes and she makes sure that these people have their food. So, you know, you are so amazing, you know, to do this. You know, what you started so many years ago, today, I can tell you, Mary and Naomi, that Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center, that little place that you had in Court Street, that you had all these volunteers, that you helped people in Tarpon Springs. Today, we have expanded to help people throughout Pinellas County. We provide food, as a matter of fact, we distribute food to over 3 million pounds a year. We help... We have continued to help the homebound, as you girls have always done, to make sure that the seniors and disabled and the veterans, and most of them are disabled, that they will be able to get their boxes of food for the week because they cannot come to pick the food up at Tarpon Springs. We still go through neighborhoods and give out food, you know, to the low-income neighborhoods that they cannot come because maybe the families are, you know, working, and they can't come to the Shepherd Center and get a bag of food. We provide a box of food for them and their families. I can tell you honestly that it is my pleasure and my passion that we are able to help so many here in Tarpon Springs. You know, we have so many people that, you know, rely on what we do, and this could have never happened if it wasn't because you started this, you know? And I am just so grateful to be a part of the Shepherd Center, and I am so grateful to be, you know, like your daughters, you know? That, you know, I love you so much, girls, you know? I really do. So, we'll continue fighting, you know? Project Thanks starts again in November, so start getting your list together, and, you know, and we'll continue the fight until there's no more breath in us to, you know, continue. But hopefully, the Shepherd Center will be around for a long time, even after I'm gone.
Hello.
Mayor.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Sorry.
Naomi, I couldn't say anything more than you said, but mappia, which is how it looks when you read it in Greek, right? When I moved here in 1985, Mary Burris was one of the first people to welcome me to Tarpon Springs, wholeheartedly. And you talk about welcoming a stranger and what that means, and I felt it and I feel it today. That connection is as strong as it ever was. I remember you and Naomi and I racing around in her car at night to go to Church's Chicken and going on various adventures, and you really taught me what it meant to welcome a stranger. And I hope that I've gotten some of that into me and that I have also shared that in our community. But I just love you so much, and that's all there is. Thank you.
Just a few anecdotes. I remember as a kid in Tarpon Springs, my first job, not my first job, but one of the jobs I enjoyed the most, Mary got that for me, became assistant director for the Boys and Girls Club, or the Boys Club at the time, with Chuck. I think I was the second employee. And, you know, little things, like you said, make a difference. Couple little funny things. Naomi, you know, they invented in the casino, instead of the push button, the slot machines, the push button because of Naomi. Reason being, I think she got tennis elbow. I think my wife went with her to Vegas one year, and she ended up getting tennis elbow because of the slot machines. So, I think that's why they invented the push buttons. But another thing, Naomi, a lot of people don't know is... People in the community, excuse me, who couldn't afford insurance, they would show up at the hospital. Naomi would run the tests without insurance. People couldn't afford it. So, she'd be invited. She would, not that they would sneak them in, because nobody told Naomi no, but they would, she would bring them in into her department and run whatever test they needed and escort them around the hospital to make sure that they were taken care of, people who didn't have medical coverage. I love you.
I love you both.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me speak. I came here in 76, from North Carolina, and it was a change. A Aunt Mary, Mary was my first board president, and we were in the flop house. And then after that, we moved into a double-wide trailer with 150 kids a day. I think we outgrew the trailer. Mary came to me one November and told me I was getting a Christmas present. And I'm going, oh my goodness. So, never told me. I found out later that we were moving from the double-wide trailer out by Fire Station Two to Rotary Park. I was in high heaven. We could get more kids in the club, we could do more programs, serve more in the community, and it was really a wonderful time for me here, serving the community and the youth of this community. Forty-four years I worked for Boys and Girls Club, and I enjoyed the most years here with this community, and Mary, Naomi being a board member with Naomi, and she renamed me Pharolopoulos. And whatever Naomi wanted me to do, I couldn't tell her no. And Mary, Naomi, I want to thank you for the support you gave me when I came here and what you did for the youth of Tarpon Springs. I really thank you.
And it's amazing that man can still walk with all the hockey sticks and pucks that were headed into his shins, and Nicky Drock is the most...
Go ahead.
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Not a child went hungry in the Boys and Girls Club. Frank DiNardo, when he was on the board, I was on the board. Mary, Naomi made sure all the children ate. And when Dr. Nina Asimak, who is with them, had a problem at the school for a child for clothes or shoes, they made sure they had them. And how many times they went to Kmart, where my husband worked there in the pharmacy to make sure kids had a Christmas. We have done so much at this community that Mr. Eisner doesn't even know what it is. That community was small then, and we still stay the same, working and giving to each other. And not only the community at wide, what they did for the Greek community too. People don't know what this group of women have done all these years. Unbelievable. They are the UN of Tarpon Springs, Florida.
But, John, I just wanted to say, the people in here have helped with the Meals on Wheels and the Shepherd Center. They cooked at their homes whenever we didn't have somewhere to go cook, and they'd bring the food in. And with the fundraising, DiNardo helped out with him, a board member, and the Julianis helped out the cooking and donations from Chagranas and of course, Yotti and all of his friends. He doesn't have a choice. And, who else was it? Dr. Dean Theophilopoulos helped us a lot to deliver the meals, you know? We had a lot of help from the community too. It's, we have a good community. We have goodness. We're all together. I want to thank everybody.
Yeah, none of this could have been done without volunteers. Our whole life was volunteers doing all the work. We were just helping. And thank God for the volunteers in this community, because we have plenty, and they're all very good, got good hearts, and they're very, very dedicated to the people that can't afford to help themselves to help other people. And we should be honoring them instead of me.
And also Ada, the director of the Shepherd Center, has done a great job. She's done, she makes sure that everybody gets the food, everybody. Thank goodness for her. And Betty is right. Yeah, Betty is right. Without the volunteers...
Bertis Archie, representing the Archie family. It's just amazing how time has flown.
Go ahead.
Mary Burris is like the aunt to me. She was real close to my family, my mom, my dad. So, it was like, I know it's been a long time. Tarpon was different, you know, different from a lot of places. The things that we go through now, I never knew existed, because Tarpon was like family. Mary Burris and Aunt Mary and Uncle Herman was like just that, aunt, uncle, because my dad was real close with them. See, my dad spoke fluent Greek, didn't know. It was like, and sung in Greek and read in Greek. So, Tarpon was unique. So, when you think about being, want to be different, you got to go back to the past. Tarpon wasn't like the rest of the county, Pinellas County or Hillsborough. So, I didn't know those things existed. It was just family. So, when people look at me like, what? I say, that was my family. She would make baklava for my class. I taught in Tampa. And they say, you made the... No, my aunt made it. Isn't it good? You know? And it was just family. And the kids just, you know, we'd go to a conference, and they were the only kids represented from Hillsborough County, and it was, you know, talking about Greek and dancing and stuff. Say, we loved it, because we got all the attention, we got to eat all that baklava ourselves and dance, and it was just, just regular human, like everybody should be. So, I thank you, and Naomi, they go to the hospitals like, hi! You know, it's like people look at you like, what's different about this? This is my family. And that's the way we should all be, you know? It's just, because we are just family. You know, a charge of people, believe it or not, believe in God and Jesus, you know? We celebrate real child, you know, the child of the King. So, we are family, and that's the way I was grew up. I didn't learn to speak, because I should have, because my dad was speaking it all the time and singing and talking. But that's how close we were, and we need to go back to those days. We're not looking at the color, whether, you know, you're chocolate or you're vanilla or you're this or that. Vanilla, the colors of the rainbow or the colors of the ice cream, we were just family. So, when you talk about somebody, you got to think about, you're talking about your own family.
Amen.
And that's the way I was treated. So, when people say, what? You're speaking to everybody? I say, that's my sister, that's my brother. That's your sister? That's your brother? Yes, because that's the way I was raised. Because if you believe in God, or you believe in God and Jesus, you need to think that way and treat people that way, because that's the way I was treated. Because I looked at your grandson, I was like, when did they grow up? When did they grow up? When did we grow up? Because we were treated correctly. And we could go back to those days. I was talking to the doc over there, my mom, I was talking about different people, and it was like, what's different about them? I don't know, because that's my brother, that's my sister, that's my cousin. So, I thank you for that. She didn't, I would say, when I said, you know, I need some baklava for the conferences I do with the kids. Every year I would do Greek as my festival for my kids, social festival. And they say, you couldn't know. My aunt could. Isn't it good? We go places. And it was like, everybody was family. And we need to go back to that, that everybody is family. We don't look at where you're from or what you are, because you are human, you're part of the human race, and we need to always treat somebody like that. That's the best part I remember of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being that way.
Hope I got up here quick enough for you. Pierdilakis 5014 Ashland Avenue. Y'all have all heard of the seeds that Ms. Burris and Ms. Patterson have planted. Now, as a seed grows, it turns into a seedling and a sapling and then into a tree. They have created the foundation of a tree and a sapling, and it's up to us, the rest of us, to keep that tree growing, because we're not going to have Mary and Naomi for us forever, and God willing, they have good years ahead. But we need people to be able to stand up for the causes that they have espoused. And something I've been up here about before, I've spoken in my scriptures, about treating the stranger in a better way. So, I'm going to speak about something here that concerned me in the past, and I hope it's not something that is still on the board's mind. So, many of you probably don't know, but a couple of years back, about a year and a half maybe, there was talk about moving the Shepherd Center on the other side of the river. The other side of the river. Now, we bought a spoil site. One of the things they talked about were various uses. I do not want to see the Shepherd Center moved over the other side of the river. Now, I'm going to propose to you, and it's something I've spoken to with Pastor Kurt of Lutheran Church. We don't need to send them across the river. Everybody knows where Avara is, across from the police station. They have medical services and dental services. Also, on that street, you have all the transit services. Now, there is a big lot between St. Timothy's and the Avara that St. Timothy Lutherans owns. In fact, I understand there was some leasing, and Shepherd Center bought a property from the Lutheran Church over years back. But that is where you need to put a center, because you'll have transportation for people to come and go, you'll have your concerns mollified by having the police station and the fire station across the street, you have your services centralized close to 19, so some people can possibly get work or help things that they have easy ways to get around. Because part of the biggest reason for homeless people is lack, not only housing, but transportation. So, I'm going to ask the Shepherd Center, the board, the city manager, the mayor, to reach out, to find a way to see if it's practical to use that space for the Shepherd Center. And that will solve the people downtown who want to move it out of town, which we know they've been trying to do for years, and not sending them across the river like there's some other people. On Thursdays, I go to Sarah's tent, and we feed the homeless on that day when they're not. And when you sit with them and you talk to these people, they have lives too, and they've had things that have come upon them that they sometimes don't know how to deal with. And these people who've set up services to help them are God's angels. are God's angels. So I would implore the board, Shepherd Center, to look at that option as a viable way to solve what some in downtown say is a homeless problem. And also more space and more room for the Shepherd Center to do their own services. They can start from the ground up and plan the whole building to be functional as a purpose of design for their uses.
Okay. Unless there's anybody else, we'll go ahead and say thank you again. And to...
Yeah.
Sure.
It's a little bit small.
No, I got it, I got it. You want to do it? Okay. Oh, okay. Mary Burris and Naomi Patterson are two sisters who were born in a time when people had nothing but, had nothing but gave everything. Their giving and loving spirits are rooted in their upbringing. They grew up not having much, but watching their mother always find a way to help her neighbors and family in need. Throughout the years, they have come to the aid of many. They have been and are, to this day, involved in various organizations and projects. But so much of what they do is behind the scenes. Anybody who needs anything can count on them. They have open minds, open hearts and open arms, and are happy to help anyone in need. They are true givers that expect nothing in return. They are the best mothers, grandmothers, godmothers, aunts, cousins and friends. They are so loved by all. Our lives are better for having Mary and Naomi in them. That's her daughter Joey. Okay, thank you. I apologize to the board and to the rest of the citizens that this meeting may end up going longer, but it was worth it. So. This is Mr. Rod Davis. He is the provost of the St. Petersburg Junior College Tarpon Campus.
Junior college?
Oh, college. I'm going back. I taught seven years there when it was a junior college. So it's embedded in me. I was there with...
Dr. Cutler?
Yes. And we also have Tanja Williams. She is the president of St. Petersburg College. We have a, we're going to do the first... Would you like to say a few things about Mr. Professor Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, could I have the family of Professor Grass come up, please? Thank you. First off, thank you, everyone, for allowing us the opportunity. My name is Dr. Rod Davis. I'm here to honor Professor Kevin Grass in the form of a resolution. Professor Kevin Grass was part of our family, which is part of your family. Professor Grass has touched the lives of many, many students. I've had the pleasure to work with him on two separate campuses, the Clearwater Campus and the Tarpon Springs Campus. And he was a force to be reckoned with in the art world. Professor Grass had a meticulous way of doing his art. And he was truly an inspiration to the art and to his students. We are blessed to be here and to honor him and to be here with his family. And Mayor, thank you for the resolution.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then any family members who want to say a few words can please do so. "The resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, extending the city's deep and heartfelt sympathy on the passing of Professor Kevin Grass. Whereas Professor Kevin Grass, a native son, esteemed educator, and accomplished artist, who passed away on February 5, 2025, leaving behind a legacy of creativity, compassion, and community service. And whereas Professor Kevin Grass, known for his humility, warmth, and unwavering dedication to the arts, served as a pillar of inspiration to countless students and colleagues during his tenure at St. Petersburg College, where he taught with passion and purpose since 1997. And whereas a proud graduate of his high school and valedictorian of his class in Missouri, Professor Grass pursued excellence in education, earning a full academic scholarship to Washington University in St. Louis. And one of his Masters of Fine Arts from the University of Georgia, where he met his beloved wife, Michaela. And whereas..." Did I say that right?
You said it.
Okay, thank you. "Whereas his artistic talent was evident from an early age and flourished into a nationally recognized career marked by hyper-realistic narrative paintings that explored both personal and societal themes. His works have been exhibited in galleries, public institutions, and private collections across Florida and beyond, including acquisitions by the state of Florida. And whereas his deep connection to Tarpon Springs remained a source of pride and inspiration throughout his life, he often credited the city's rich cultural heritage and natural beauty as foundational to his artistic vision and personal values. And whereas Professor Kevin Grass will be remembered not only for his artistic brilliance, but also for his generosity of spirit, his mentorship of young artists, and his timeless commitment to fostering creativity, critical thinking in the classroom and the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Tarpon Springs does hereby recognize and honor the life, work, and enduring impact of Professor Kevin Grass, and extends its deepest condolences to his family, friends, students, and all who are touched by his extraordinary life. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city commission and copies be transmitted to his wife, Michaela, and his son Nicholas, the State of Florida Archives, and Tarpon Springs Historical Society. This being passed and adopted this 22nd day of July 2025." Would you like to say a few things?
Yes. I wasn't really ready to speak. This is Michaela. I am Kevin's wife. I was fortunate to be with him for 33 years. He was a wonderful person, but also a wonderful teacher and great artist. And if you're curious to see, he's done landscapes that are done around Tarpon Springs. So if you go on his website, you can go kevangrass.com or kevangrass.art, you will recognize Howard Park. You will recognize some of the places that he would visit on his bicycle as he drove around our community. Because he always enjoyed the natural beauty here. And you will find that he had a great sense of humor and did a lot of silly things with rubber ducks just to make people smile. We started that during the pandemic, when it was too hard to get models in real life. And so the rubber ducks turned out to be a fun way for him to paint from things, from life, and spread joy at a time when we really needed it. So I appreciate that you in this community are recognizing him. Once upon a time, Kevin tried his luck at the talent show here. It was really a big stretch. He was a self-taught guitarist. And that was not his main art. But it was in this very same room that he got applause for that. And so this is very poignant. And I thank you so much. Also for Dr. Williams and Dr. Davis from our college to come and help recognize Kevin's accomplishments. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nicholas. And just on the way here, it's amazing to see how my dad was ever-present. On the way here, I saw the trail that we used to bike on. I saw the parks that we used to go to, Discovery Park, with the wooden playset. It was a great time, great memories. It's also good to see other people who have been very influential gained to meet you two through all these people that talk about you. My dad also had a great influence on those around him. So it's nice to see not only his impact or your impact, but to know that there are many people in our community that have been contributing to our society as a whole. And to know that we remember them and commemorate them is very important to me, and I hope it's important to you. And it's really nice to see that in our lives, what we do matters and it is recognized by those who care about it. So if nothing else from tonight, please take that away and live your life the best you can. So not only can you be remembered, but you can be enjoyed while you're still here.
Well, you kind of stole my thunder. I want to say to Miss Mary and Miss Naomi, thank you for everything that you have done. If you lived in South St. Petersburg, my family would have been the families that you would be serving. So thank you for what you've done. For Professor Grass, my last time with him was at the Lepa Ratner Museum. He was displaying his art. We did a selfie together and we took some other pictures. I'm the selfie queen of the college. I do a lot of selfies. But he was so excited to explain to me the detail of his paintings, his drawings, explaining every piece with real excitement and very detailed. And I learned a lot about him and art. And I'm really proud that one of his pictures sit in my office today. And you know, it's one thing to share what a person has done after the fact. And sometimes you don't get to say goodbye. And sometimes that's the way the Lord sets it up. And we can't control it. But it's never too late, never too late, to say thank you and to recognize them. So thank you for sharing him with us at St. Pete College. I'm sweating because I'm having a hot flash, you know. When you get old, you get them. But I know that he spent a lot of time at SPC. And I know that you guys made some sacrifices for him to do that. And we thank you for that because you did not have to do that. You could have whined and made him come home. But you let him stay and we appreciate that. And what you said was so impactful. Good job, young man. Thank you.
Here are some more of the resolutions for your own personal.
Thank you so much. We're good?
We're good.
Thank you. So today, well, tonight, we're also going to recognize another Tarpon Springs legend who has done everything to make sure that our students learn. And we're going to bring his son, Professor Basil Moustatsos. Am I saying that right, Basil? And his sister Lisa? Where's Lisa? Oh, she's coming. Come on up, Lisa. I'm sorry. My name is hard to pronounce, but I don't want to mess up anyone else's name. Wonderful. I did not have the privilege of meeting Costas V. Dino Moustatsos. Sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong. My head, not my heart, okay? Blame it on that. But I've learned that he has made such a huge impact in our community. And we want to make sure at St. Petersburg College that legends are recognized, valued, and appreciated. And all I can say, if he was as good as his son, he was awesome. Because Basil's amazing. He's better? All right. So here's the same resolution as my hot flash glasses steam up. Whereas Costas V. Dino Moustatsos, a dedicated Tarpon Springs High School administrator, St. Petersburg College Academic Advisor, educator, and cherished member of our St. Petersburg College community, passed away peacefully on March 31, 2025. And whereas Mr. Moustatsos developed his life, devoted his life to the service of others through education, mentorship, and unwavering support for students, colleagues, and the broader community. And whereas Mr. Moustatsos's distinguished 36-year career in Pinellas County School System, followed by his impactful tenure at St. Petersburg College's Tarpon Springs Campus, exemplified his steadfast commitment to student success, integrity, and the transformative power of education. And whereas Mr. Moustatsos brought to his role at St. Petersburg College a wealth of experience, compassion, and wisdom, guiding countless students with patience, encouragement, and a deep belief in their potential. And whereas Mr. Moustatsos's legacy extends beyond the classroom and advising office, he was a proud veteran of the U.S. Army Reserves, a devoted husband of 54 years, a loving father and grandfather, and a man of faith, character, and generosity. And whereas Mr. Moustatsos's life is a testament to the values of service, perseverance, and community, his memory will continue to inspire all who had the privilege of knowing him. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College, on behalf of the entire college community, hereby honors the life and legacy of Costas V. Dino Moustatsos, expresses its deep condolences to his family and recognizes with gratitude his many years of dedicated service and the lasting impact he made on the lives of students and colleagues alike. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official records of St. Petersburg College and that a copy be presented to the Moustatsos family as a token of our respect, admiration, and heartfelt sympathy. Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, Chair Jason Butts, President Dr. Tanja Williams, Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you so much. That was very lovely. I think we're actually quite humbled to be up here sharing the honors with everybody. It's funny how good people know each other, you know. My dad knew Kevin's work, too. I was a model for a couple of his works. My dad hated modern art, by the way. He hated it. And Kevin's work is so traditional. And he saw the ones I was in, he goes, he's good. He's a real guy. I like this guy. He's good. So, but no, my father was a big fan of doing everything complete, doing it whole and doing it right. And if you, if he saw you doing it wrong, if you're in high school or college, he'd tell you. He'd say, listen, you're doing it wrong. He'd help you out a little bit if you find the right path. And if you didn't feel like you were on the right path, he'll help you find the right path a little bit. And this one legacy that we take with us from him and also from my mother as well, is how probably me and my sister both ended up in education. You know, the principal Tarpon I here, too. You can't see how these things fell. She surpassed him. He's very proud of that, actually. And, but it's funny, he'd hate this. He would hate... I'm not allowed to tell stories about... I wasn't allowed to tell stories about him until now. He told me I wasn't. Fact. He was your classmate, Mary. And that's some class y'all had. That's some class y'all had. Yeah. I'll tell you something. And I've heard the two of y'all speak about the volunteers of this community, and my dad will attest to this, too. And I'm speaking for him in this one. The reason why you have so many volunteers helping y'all is no one can say no to you. And my father couldn't either. So when you would work, were you the president of the class? No, I know, but you weren't the president of the class, right? You weren't like the, no. You just do the reunions every month. We have them yearly for everybody else. You all have reunions every month, yeah. Yeah, y'all would go to lunch. Y'all go to lunch every month. Oh, okay, I knew you were involved. My dad would dodge your calls when you didn't want to go. when you didn't want to go. Because he can't... He answered the phone, and you would be there. He could not say no to you. So I'll tell you this much right now. He's just dodging your calls right now. Okay? That's all there is to it. That's how you think about him. So, all right? And we all love you all very much. Thank you for all you have done. You know, I echo that one, too. But no, thank you for this honor. And I don't know if you... You good? Okay. Thank you very much.
I was remiss in not calling on all the commissioners for a comment on any of these people we're honoring. As far as Mr. Mousatzos is concerned, you know, they say you know the tree by the fruit it bears. And when you look at his two children, Professor Mousatzos and our esteemed principal of our beloved high school, you know that he lived a good life because he left good fruit. So I'll go this way this time. Frank, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would. I didn't have the privilege of knowing Professor Grass, but I'm happy that we had an individual like that in our community and grateful. The person I know the best probably is Naomi and Mary and their husbands. And they taught me an early lesson. Both of them told me how much they loved each other. They were very happy with their choices. And I go back to the Boards and Girls Club next year. And Chuck, I think, is still here, and Mike's here. Many of us on the board, we would always know if we were going to have a great meeting because you could smell the food. And it was usually Naomi back in the back corner with the food. And she was always... And Chuck's 100% correct. You could never tell Naomi no. That word did not compute with the lady. And that's why Naomi and Mary has been always able to get things done. And I, for one, am grateful to be a part of a community such as yours. Also, I have to speak highly of Dino. He was my neighbor at one time. And I was still learning the community and how to conduct myself. And as his son told you, he would help you with that if you needed it. And he would even help me with, "Oh, that tree is such and such." And he was just a consummate gentleman as well as a great neighbor. I admire him very, very much. It warms your heart for all of you. Thank you.
Hi, Smears.
Thank you, Mayor. So you giving me these hand signals, is it over? It's not over yet. So just to let you know. I didn't know you, but I do now. And I know you because of the people that love you, come up and pour their hearts out and explain exactly who you are. And you know, you should be totally honored that the people all in this room are here to honor you for what you've done and what you're doing. I will tell you that when I travel around Tarpon Springs and they ask me, "Why did I settle on Tarpon Springs?" I always tell them that I love the people. I love the town. I love what it stands for. I love the history. I don't want it to change. And I don't want it to change because of people like you. What you've set is what I'd like to carry on. And you're bringing me to tears, so it's not over yet. I have to catch my breath a little bit. But to listen to the people here in this room talk about you, it's like I've known you all my life. And you are the people that I will continue to represent. You are the people I will fight for, and you are the people I love. So thank you so much for being who you are and for treating the people of Tarpon Springs so well. And thank you.
I just wanted to take the time to recognize Professor Grass and his family. Hearing his son's speech was amazing. And he even gave her a tough time speaking afterwards. So I'm sure he's very proud. And for Mr. Mousatzos and his family, it's true. They're his children, and Professor Mousatzos and Principal Fatelitis are great people. Principal Fatelitis, I tell her all the time, had the honor of being our summer camp teacher at the Flophouse in our adolescent middle, you know, middle school teenage years. And she did a great job raising us. And Professor Mousatzos has just been a great guy in the community. So it's just an honor to honor Mr. Mousatzos and everybody who's helped dedicate their lives of service to Tarpon Springs and all the education. Thank you.
I'm sure you drove that poor man crazy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Banther?
Thank you. I think tonight's a good testament for all these great people that we've honored and why Tarpon Springs is a great place to live. I think it'd be hard-pressed to find a lot of small towns in 2025 that can get together here and reminisce and talk about the legacy of service that people have had. And especially for those tonight, it's service that was very humble and quiet. You know, nowadays, people do one good deed and they want to make a whole, you know, thing about it. But these are people tonight, especially Mary and Naomi, that, you know, do things that you don't see in public. I learned things tonight about them, and I've known of them, you know, almost my entire life. And I learned things tonight that I did not know about them. So you guys have a great legacy here in Tarpon Springs. And I think the good works you've done are going to live far beyond you. But I do wish you many years. Thank you.
Tureen?
Thank you, Mayor. It's kind of full circle for me. I remember being in high school. Kenny Henderson used to make me go get checks for Thea Naomi and Thea Mary for kids who needed yearbooks, caps and gowns, a meal. They never said a word. I was one of those recipients. I look at my good friend Yoti here speaking, and I say, you know, and to the commissioner, "God bless you, Mrs. Fatelitis, for having to deal with them at the Flophouse." But it's full circle because I look at that first two rows of people that I've dealt with, and those are two rows of legends. I got Dr. Assamak here. She saved me in elementary school while Principal Fatelitis suspended me from school. So this is very humbling to hear Mrs. Archie talk from cross-sections of life how many people that you guys have touched. I'm looking in this crowd of people who have truly benefited from everything that you guys have done. So whatever God had planned for you, I'm sure you're working that plan. And, you know, I know I'm a recipient of it. I know that we are better as a community because of you. So, Mayor, I thank you for just giving me a chance to just say just a little bit because I know just a little bit of what you've done. And your humbleness has not allowed you to brag about what you've done. And that's what makes a human being remarkable and great. So thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our presentations and proclamations. Oh, I'm sorry.
John Jennings, 2204 Pine Drive in Tarpon. I was privileged to meet Michela when she was on the Public Art Committee. And through Michela, I met Kevin. She alluded to the rubber ducks. He was working on Barbies. And not only did he have beautiful landscapes and representational art, he also had very stinging social commentary for which he won many awards. I think the only thing that Kevin loved more than Tarpon and SPC were Michela and Nicholas.
Okay, that concludes our presentations. I'll give... Okay, I'm gonna break. Yeah, let's do this. Why don't we take a, let's say, 10-minute break? Get back here at 7:55, and then we'll have public comments on other items.
Can everyone please sit down, please? Or... thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll wait for Commissioner Kulyas to... Is he out there? Robin, can you see if Commissioner Kulyas is out there? You know, anybody watching these meetings, they're like, oh, man, Tarpon Springs is different. We're calling people out, "Get in here!" Hey, Derek, can you see if Commissioner Kulyas and your colleague are out there?
There he is, there he is.
Yeah, here he comes. He's making his entrance.
Don't worry, you're not late.
You look good.
Your hair is perfect.
And here he comes. Okay, so let's go to item number three on our special presentations. It's the Charter Revision Commission recommendation. It'll be Dr. Carrie Root.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners and Attorney Salzman, the Chief and Assistant Chief City Clerk and the City Manager for allowing us time to share some ideas with you. First, I want to thank all the board for the opportunity that this commission has had to serve the city of Tarpon Springs. It's a tremendous honor. And studying the Charter, which is the governing document of the city, provides an insight on how the city is run unlike anything else I've experienced. And I'm lucky, this is my second time on the Charter Revision Commission. So first, thank you for the opportunity to serve. The second thing I'd like to do is I would like to recognize two of the Charter Revision Commission members that are here with me, John Jennings and Mike Cuskudis. We had a full year last year of discussions and deliberations and interested citizens coming and talking to us. It was a very interesting period of time in my life last year. And I want to say, echoing what we just heard with the proclamations and memorials, Tarpon Springs isn't just a city. It's a community of engaged, committed, and involved individuals with hearts of service. And that is just so true in all that I experience here in Tarpon. Okay, so I also want to say thank you very much to the Vice Mayor for attending our last charter meeting. I know that they go long sometimes, but I appreciate that you showed an interest in Kane. So why am I here? Wasn't our job done with the amendments made to the charter? Well, we had many individuals come to talk to us: citizens, commissioners, employees of the city. We had a lot of people that had opinions that they shared with us. And during the process of our deliberations, there were items discussed that our commission deemed that were just not appropriate as charter amendment changes, I mean, as charter changes for amendment. But we felt that there were a number of items that would benefit the city for the Board of Commissioners to review. And that is the genesis of the recommendations I'm going to summarize. And it's for your information. We hope that you will take these and consider them for action. But that's not our job. Our job is just to share information here. So the first one came from a desire to keep Tarpon's vibe as a small town, even though we've grown into a much larger city. So the first recommendation is that we actually adopt an ordinance for building height restrictions. Require those height variances to be approved by the Board of Adjustments that also require a supermajority approval from the Board of Commissioners. And any change of that ordinance should also require a supermajority approval from the Board of Commissioners. And what I'm reading from is part of your backup. So you don't need to take notes, it's all there. The second thing is, we request that the city be more active in maintaining the cuts in our waterways to provide recreational access to the Anclot River in the Gulf of America. This is a charter provision, but it has not been well planned for in the budget, and there's not a published plan for completing this work, even though cut access has decreased significantly over the years. And in some areas, those cuts are no longer providing recreational access or otherwise. The next item is received a tremendous amount of discussion. We believe that by allowing the planning and zoning recommendations to be included in the consent agenda to address better use of the Board of Commissioners' P and Z applicants and staff time would be a real positive. Okay, in the charter is a requirement for a civil service board. And we left it in so there would not be a perceived loss of employee benefits. However, it is incumbent on the Board of Commissioners and the City Manager to make all employees aware of the Civil Service Board. As we discussed with employees, the Civil Service Board is addressed as a part of their orientation to employment. But that's also a time when they're learning many other things related to their new employment, and it's just not sufficient to ensure that they have awareness of this benefit. Along with that, the Board of Commissioners, please consider appointing and maintaining a membership for the Civil Service Board. Right now, it's just a name in a charter. The next thing we discussed is that this city is large enough for a full-time city attorney. So we suggest that you all consider bringing one on staff. We're doing a tremendous amount in the city with forward thinking. We'd like to recommend that the guidelines from the Sustainability Committee be shared with the boards of the city of Tarpon Springs. All the boards should have that and should review it. I know, sometimes it's hard to share all the information or make sure those people are reading what they need to read, but we need to do a better job of that. We would request that, in order to generate more civil, or rather, citizen participation in our boards, that we improve and expand public outreach to citizens to increase their involvement in the city government. We think you should consider an active recruiting process where critical skills to a board are mapped to citizens and then a direct ask to those citizens to serve, as opposed to just having applications come in and then you do the best fit. We think the city would be better managed that way. We request that the city focus more on maintaining their CLG status and follow the National Historic Guidelines for our local and national historic districts. This is a really critical time as well with all the flooding that's happening. And recognizing that this may require training for that board. We request that our sidewalks of the city be repaired. Please budget for this. Please set up a plan for repair and for future funding. It's a big part of what people see when they go down and walk around the sponge docks, when they see Spring Bayou. We need to do a better job of maintaining that. And then the last item here is revitalizing the Marine Commerce Committee. We recommend that this be adopted as an ordinance. We have written a summary of our thoughts on what that board should be doing, and that's the second page of the information provided. And we ask that you seriously consider this because Tarpon Springs is more than just tourists. This is an active, working port, and that is as important to our heritage as the tourism piece. Let's not forget that. And I just will close with a big thank you. This has been a tremendous experience for me. And thank you to my fellow commissioners on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Root. We'll have any comments or questions to Dr. Root. I just want to start off by saying that I hear all your recommendations, and many of them have merit. But more importantly, I just want to thank you. I know you guys worked really hard, had a lot of meetings. You spent a lot of time diving very deep into our charter, and the city owes you a debt of gratitude, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Root, and all of the members here tonight. I got to serve with you, I think, it was like 2019 or 2020. I know that's a hard board. You guys meet a lot. You guys meet more than the boards that meet year-round as far as hours combined. You made some great recommendations tonight. One that popped out to me was the last one you just said was the Marine Commerce Committee. I know we started that almost 10 years ago, or not started it, but revitalized it. We were preparing for the recent dredge. So I'd like the City Manager, after we get through budget season, to have that on the agenda for us to discuss up here.
Thank you very much. It is very important.
Yes, thank you very much.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I too would like to thank all of you, the three of you that have seen, for your time. I do know that it's quite an involvement to go through the entire charter and spend the time that you've all spent. And I'm grateful, having spent, like, three different times on that committee. I know how detailed it can be, and you've done a thorough job, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Root, Ms. Jennings, as well as Mr. Cuskudis for volunteering, as well as everyone else who was on the board volunteering for the Charter Revision Committee. It's every week during, what, almost a year? You know, so they've done a great job. I appreciate your recommendations, and at some point, I'm sure, we'll review them all. And I'd like to ask, when we do get a review them, that we do have members of the Charter Revision here to help supplement any additional information as we talk about this. And so thank you all for this report.
Yeah, this commission, we're not active for the next four years, but we are available to answer questions about our deliberations. So they don't fold the commission. We're just not active, unless we're called.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you. I know just how hard you worked. It's not an easy charter to deal, especially to get out 23 and us adding it to 24 and trying to get to an agreement. I did watch every single one of your charter meetings, even the one you weren't there, Carrie, and you were out. And it was sometimes contentious, but we've had a lot accomplished. And I was just glad to be present at as many as I could possibly be. I was impressed with everybody's input because we did have a very, very diverse group of people. So I just want to thank Joan Jennings, Mike Cuskudis, and all the rest who are not even here. But it was really well thought out. It's our bible. And, you know, it's not easy to change things, and you have to get really into the nitty-gritty of what is viable to be changed and what we should leave. I also am thanking you for all these suggestions. They're all good suggestions, and I look forward to, with the rest of this board, moving forward and discussing all of those suggestions. I think it was a great idea. I know it's not part of the charter, but you're a resident, and you have two resident supporters here. And I think it was very good that you are bringing this up to us. We kind of had an idea, but it always is a blessing to get it from the horse's mouth. And so just thank you for all your hard work. I know with your schedule, you really had to stay on top of things and keep tabs of what you covered and what you didn't cover, and who said what and who didn't say what. And here's one more thank you I wanted to do, and that's to our attorney, Mr. Salzman, who sat with you all. Are you still listening there, Mr. Salzman?
He deserves a big thank you. He helped us tremendously, answering all our questions and everything. He's a tremendous resource.
Well, you know what? He had to take all of the comments and turn them into charter wording. And for those who don't know, it's not easy. You know, he's limited to 75 words, so not everything, you know, transpires to the public. So I know that you all worked very hard, and I just want to thank everybody. It was a blessing to work with you and to see you in action, so thank you.
It was a lot easier to get things done when Irene gave me a gavel, and I didn't have to use my shoe.
Next year, you can borrow this one. Okay, let's go to public comments. That'll be on any items, could be on the consent agenda items or any items not to be discussed further in the meeting.
Mike Cuskudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. Just to piggyback what Dr. Root said, but also a thank you, a very big thank you to staff because staff made what we did much, much easier when we needed something. They were there, Michelle and Irene. You know, kudos to Mr. Salzman for his input. And, you know, you've got a wonderful staff that really helped guide us through, and we're right on top of what we needed during the Charter Revision meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time as well.
Hello, Tori Huff, 40 West Boyer Street, Tarpon Springs. I just want to bring to your attention two things that are fantastic. And I don't think that you always hear about that, and they are both present. And so I thought I'd take this opportunity. First of all, Assistant Chief Mathis, I saw your unhoused liaison officer have a fantastic interaction with an unhoused individual last week. And it moved me to tears, the empathy, the kindness, the understanding. I wanted, in my car and at my home, because I literally live right by the Shepherd Center. They're my neighbor. So I always have water and prepackaged food in my house area and also in my car, having been someone who worked previously in my old city with the unhoused. But I also have it in my car. And so my first reaction anytime I see someone is I want to go to my car and grab my bag and take things. But when I saw your officer, I realized I didn't need to do that. And so I just want to thank you. I want to thank your department for the leadership and for the kindness that I saw displayed. Thank you so very much. And I want to thank Ada. As my neighbor, the Shepherd Center, I have never, ever had a problem. My home, my vehicles have never been broken into. I've never had anything vandalized. I have lived there now a year. And as some of you know, that area of the Fruit Bowl was devastated by the storm surge of the hurricane. I had over four feet of water in my home. I had over four feet of water in my home. And we could have had squatters in our home while it was being repaired, not once. I have my regulars, who I see on my street, and I know by name, that will just come in and check in on me. I'm known as the mango lady. I have two mango trees that I regularly give out mangoes to. And I say hello to them, and they say hi to me. And I think they are just as protective of my property as I am of them. And I just want to thank you. Thank you for your leadership and your love and your care. And I want to thank you, because these attitudes come from our leadership. So, thank you for your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Peter Lacus, 514 Ashland Avenue. Tonight's reading will be short, but I think it lends to what we've been discussing today. This is Isaiah 56. "This is what the Lord says: Maintain justice and do what is right; for my salvation is close at hand, and my righteousness will soon be revealed. Blessed is the man who does this, the man who holds it fast, who keeps a Sabbath without consecrating it, and keeps his hand from doing any evil." So, as far as the charter recommendations, the height restrictions, I think, is good. The sustainability guidelines, that's nice, but unless there's some teeth that the other boards have to implement those guidelines into their decisions, it's just information. Revitalizing the Marine Commerce Committee is something we've spoken about before, and as was mentioned, this is a big part of our community, and we need to do what we can to maintain that and actually try to help it grow. Lastly, from the New Business Observer, the Florida Tax Watch says, "The latest round of tariffs is causing more agitation among Florida fiscal analysts. Florida Tax Watch, a nonprofit government watchdog and taxpayer research institute, looked at the latest tariffs and concluded, while the tariffs aim to protect domestic industries and boost capital investment, in the long term, they pose significant risks to the broader economy. The new tariffs will likely exert pressure on Florida's economy as consumers face higher prices, small businesses encounter increased operational costs, unemployment rises, and overall economic growth slows." And contrary to what others hear, that Indonesia or Malaysia is paying 19% or 25%, they're not paying it. We end up paying for it. And here's some examples. And to the National Association Home Builders, 75% of the imported lumber used for construction comes from Canada, and a crucial component of drywall gypsum comes from Mexico. When these tariffs get hit, when these materials get hit with tariffs, costs in the construction industry are expected to increase by more than $3 billion. With a 25% tariff on cars, one car for the domestic producers is expected to increase by at least 15%. The report also found specific impacts on Florida consumers. The higher construction cost can increase the price of a typical house built by Florida developers by $10,000. An average Floridian's weekly grocery bill is expected to increase by 10% to 15% as a result of the imported tariffs. We need to stop this foolishness because, basically, it's a switcheroo. We end up paying taxes for it, and in return, give tax breaks to the rich corporations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I made my time. God damn.
Did a good job. Any further comments?
Hello, Eric Allman, 313 North Chris Avenue. I'd like to discuss Agenda Item Number 26 regarding the Versa surface on the Riverside tennis courts.
Sir, we're not talking about anything on the agenda, on the business items. When we get to that thing, that point, you can actually get up and speak.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you. These are all the items that are not on the agenda, just general comments.
Katie Taylor, 657 Haven Place, Tarpon Springs. I would like to say good evening, first of all. I would like to thank all of you, the mayor and commissioners here, who voted to approve Item Number Four on the agenda last week in the July 8th consent agenda for the Sponger project to be moved off, relocated off of MLK and Gross to move it up into Dorset Park. Thank you even more for not following Vice Mayor Eisner down a rabbit hole that appeared to imply one of only three people on the Art Council submitted fraudulent residency information on their application to the city.
Ma'am, ma'am. Katie, we have rules we're not allowed to, you're not allowed to address.
Okay.
Individual commissioners, just if you could make your comments to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Well, at least you know where I'm coming from. Okay. I would like to thank...
She said Vice Mayor Eisner. We're all adults here. Come on.
Just address me, Katie. Just address me, please.
As mentioned in the meeting, each of you and the city clerk, Irene Jacob, received an email I sent to each of you from Rose Cemetery Association with a new Sunbeers report showing that they had a newly elected board. Each year, that organization send the city their new Board of Directors, a list of their new Board of Directors. So, if anybody called the city asking who's in charge of that cemetery, the city will be able to direct them to the proper party. I would like, if I can say it, I would like to say thank you to two of the people on this, three of the people on this diocese, well, four, really, for taking time, two of them to call me. Two people on that diocese called me when there was a conflict that they seen when I sent that Sunbeers report, which showed my address as holiday on the Sunbeers report and as a Tarpon address on my license, and I provided Irene with the proper information for my application for the Art Council. I've had that holiday address as a mailing address on Sunbeers since 2016, and that's my son's address, if you need to know. I was very surprised when a certain person on this diocese requested Item Four be deferred because he felt he needed clarification on a member's address. That person know my phone number. He didn't call me before, so why didn't he bother to call me this time? Two people called me, and I gave them information, I provided them information that they requested to ensure that I was safe on this board. It seems like a lot of in-depth questions were done, done in vain, to stop the project from that project happening. I don't appreciate being viewed as I was submitting fraudulent documentation. I know you're going to say, "I never called her name." You didn't have to, because I sent you the email. That's the email you brought to this floor, and you read from it. So, you can't say that you didn't know. By reading certain addresses as an official on that board, that was in violation of my privacy to reveal addresses, and it was abuse of your platform. In the end, I just want to say that if that happens again, I would prefer a phone call. I'd appreciate a phone call because it was clearly explained. And on that tape, if you listen on that July 8th tape, that particular person said, "Oh, my God. Oh, my God was the right person to call." Because if you come for me again, I'm going to file a complaint. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri Wendt. I live at 1214 Riverside Drive. And I'm coming with a little bit of a problem that I thought this time I would ask for help because I didn't before. And a friend had recommended that maybe I should just come in and ask if somebody had any idea of what I can do. I own property in downtown that is at 109 Hibiscus Street. I have a triplex, and I have a gallery of fun finds, which is an artist co-op, which is there. About three years ago, I encountered a problem where I had a lot of trees on the back of the property and two beautiful oaks that had grown together, and a complaint came in from code enforcement that one of my back, one of the trees, the one in the back, was shedding leaves and things and pieces of the tree, and it was causing a problem. The code enforcement told me they couldn't tell me who it was, but that I needed to cut the trees down. I did call and contact code enforcement. I talked to the arborist, and ultimately, I went to a meeting. And in the end, I lost, and the, both trees came down, even though one was alive and one was dead. So, it was disappointing, but that happened for a lot of money. Then, a week ago, I get a call from the gentleman that owns that property behind me that he is getting ready to bring in a large building, a metal building, and put on that property that will be of some income for him. And it will be going lot line to lot line because we have zero tolerance in that neighborhood, which I did not know. And it seems like, it's kind of like a downtown area. It seems like putting any kind of a building lot line to lot line is kind of crazy. But I did check on that, and that's what we have. And he said he was going to put that in, and he would be coming in off of Hibiscus, which has just kind of like a little alley. It doesn't even have a name. One, I have concern that if he's going to rent out storage or whatever's going to happen, it's going to be a little difficult there. It's already hard to get a UPS truck or anything big in and out of there. Secondly, though, he told me that the trees that I had along my property line were going to be in the way. They had started growing over the years, and I have seven huge sable palms. And they give me shade, and they give me protection for, like, a hurricane that's coming. They help a lot. He said they had to go. So, and I talked to him for a few minutes. I said, "Why do you have to put your building, like, right at the fence?" Well, that's what he wants to do. And he was going to put a monolithic slab, and he said, "I'll be cutting your roots, and I will be, you know, I will be cutting your trees." I said, "I'll get back to you." So, then, today, I get a, first, I get a message. He found me a quote for $1,600 so that I could take my trees down, all of them. I don't want to take my trees down, but, so, at some point, I did call him. And he said that he'd already been to the city, he's already talked to an arborist, he's already talked to everybody, and he's going to, he's going to do this. And he told me, "I already have permitting."
Sherri?
Yes.
I apologize.
Yes.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
So, why don't you get the city manager's card?
Okay.
It's either right there or in the back, and give him a call and discuss your matter.
Okay.
And I'm sure he'll help you.
I would like some help because I do not want to cut my trees down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call him.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, can I ask you to consider to waive the rules just for the Riverside Courts and just give them maybe one minute to speak because they're about an hour and a half?
I actually moved the Riverside Court up to the first business item.
Okay.
So...
Perfect.
If that's okay with all the other commissioners?
That's fine.
Is that okay with everyone? All right, thank you. I'll move it up to the first item. So, let's go ahead with the consent agenda first. So, Consent Agenda Number Four, Item Four, Attorney Fees, Eunice Salzman, Johnson Jackson P L L C. Number Five, Award File for a Single Source Purchase of Cummins Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Service. Number Six, Award File Repair Services for Godwin Pumps. Number Seven, Special Event Detour Music Festival. Number Eight, Award File for Guardian Fueling Technologies. Number Nine, Award File for Bermad Water Control Valves Parts and Service. Number Ten, Award File for Fire Alarm Panel. Number Eleven, Increase File Single Source Purchase of Mental Health Resources. Number Twelve, Award File for Single Source Purchase of Vactor and Elgin Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Service. Number Thirteen, Award File for Leak Detection Services. Number Fourteen, Increase File for Annual Maintenance and Support Software to Central Square Technologies. Number Fifteen, High Visibility Enforcement Program Contract Agreement. Number Sixteen, Adoption of the 2025 Urban Forestry Management Plan by the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners. Number Seventeen, Increase File for the Annual Maintenance of Power DMS HR Policy. Number Eighteen, Increase File Microsoft and Software Licenses Through Sourcewell Cooperative Contract. And Number Nineteen, Award File for Single Source Purchase of Ammunitions. Is, does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items? With that said, is there any discussion on any of these items?
No discussion on consent.
Oh, no discussion, apologies, no discussion on consent. Let's go to roll call, please.
No, no, we need to move. So moved.
I'm sorry. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, microphone.
Okay, with that said, let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Koulias?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're going to move Item Number 26, the update on the Riverside Courts, to our 20th spot. Mr. Robertson? Or city manager?
Charles?
Whichever. You a city manager?
Certainly, I can kick us off. Basically, this item, we originally intended to bring it to you. We had an agreement with the manufacturer because of the complaints we'd received to remove the courts. They would do the labor, palletize them, and all we could give was $30,000 refund. We were past, well past, the refund date. However, they had a clause in the contract which they won't remove, that we can't sign, a confidentiality clause. Our attorneys advised us, we can't sign that. So, we're sort of at an impasse with them of, we can remove the courts ourself and keep them. We looked into surplusing them on gov deals and auctioning them. We found there's very little money there. We could try to find a use somewhere else, but we need to get direction from you if we need to continue to pursue to remove them or just leave them there.
Did you have anything to say?
Nothing additional to add, no, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. So, let's have questions before we go to public comment. Let me, I'll start off. This will be questions and comments. I will go to both. So, you know, I don't play tennis. I played pickleball on there one time. You know, yeah, the ball doesn't bounce quite as well as it would on, like, the courts we have down on Safford. I mean, I'm indifferent to what we do here, but I've heard enough from enough people that actually have been enjoying those courts for many years. And if the rest of the board wants to pull those courts out, then I'll go along with that. Commissioner Banther?
What's the, this might be for the city attorney, what is the purpose of this non-disclosure? I mean, like, we're at a public meeting discussing this. Is that what they don't want to have happen, or what can we not disclose?
Commissioner, I mean, we have to be able to disclose, as you know, because if somebody made a public records request, so, we can't sign anything that says confidential because it's, we can't, I mean, we're just not allowed to put it in.
That's just absurd.
Right. So, that seems to be a stumbling block.
And that's a contingent upon this $30,000 refund?
Apparently.
And I assume you've worked them as hard as you can?
We have, other than, I haven't had a contact to talk to anybody over there, but apparently, that's the position they've presented, that we have to sign this confidentiality, which we are legally prohibited from doing. We originally offered, we removed that section and offered to return it to sign. They wouldn't accept that.
I mean, I'm good with whatever the majority of this commission wants, like the mayor. I'm not a tennis player. I mean, I, I grew up across the street from these courts. It's one of the first things I remember I did is I emailed Beverly Belairis. Not email, we didn't have email back then, but I called Beverly Belairis, who was the mayor, and asked her to paint those light poles. That's, you know, that's, that shows my age a little bit, but I don't play tennis. I don't have any opinion on this. I, I think it would, might be better, city attorney, I don't know if it, this would work, but maybe if you could get in touch with their attorney and just talk them through this. I understand a non-disclosure in business, but this is a city. We, we literally, that's the opposite of what we do. So maybe just if you could have, try and get ahold of their counsel if they happen to see if they can eliminate that, because I don't feel that's right. They're making this contingent upon that, but if they refuse, we have to make it right. So I'm good with whatever.
Can I, let me ask one question on, on this non-disclosure.
It's a confidentiality.
Okay, it's confidential on not disparaging their product? Is that what this is about?
No, that the whole agreement is confidential.
We can't do that.
Right. Which we can't do.
We can't do it. We're no such.
Okay, Commissioner Ban, uh, Di Donato?
Um, I still would like to hear some public comment on the, on the issue, but I agree with what Commissioner Banther's just stated. I certainly would rather get 30,000 than try to, to, you know, get the thousand. Uh, that's kind of a no-brainer, I think, but, uh, I'll yield to what the board, board determines is best. Um, I know when, when this was discussed, it came right on about the time I came on and it, it had been researched according to our public directors, but you know, it, it was new. Uh, so there's just a lot of, a lot of if, ands and buts about the project, but certainly, uh, we should negotiate our best deal. Uh, so I would think we should go back to their attorney and, and see where we can go from there.
Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kuyas, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, what, what I think is like we do this, let our attorneys talk. Hopefully we can get the $30,000. Uh, I mean, uh, it's something maybe we should have picked up and just in case, but, um, you know, we were sold by staff and it's not putting anything on anybody that these were good, you know, internationally certified, you know, Versa Court, and I'm sure they've been good, you know, for certain areas, but the fact of the matter is we got this wrong. And, you know, as a board, whoever was on the board at the time, including myself, and, and so we should have paid the money we needed to, to get them resurfaced in a way that would, uh, keep the, the same, um, court and foundation of the court for, uh, residents to, to improve on. So, uh, I'm in a position that we just, we do it the right way. We bite the bullet, we take them out, try to get the 30,000. If not, keep them to the side. There might be some other court youthful place to be able to build in the future where, you know, it's not so much driven by morning activity where the, the dew is on the floor and stuff. And so, um, we just got to bite the bullet. Unfortunately, we, we got it wrong and the way to make it right is, is to do it, put it, resurface it back in its original court, you know, fix the little divots or whatever's there and, um, it's going to cost money, but it's the right thing to do for us.
Vice Mayor? Thank you. So, uh, once again, I'm just going to tell you, I probably did most of the research on this one. Um, I, I have to tell you, we had a choice. We had $100,000 to repair the court. We had 250,000 to get a lifetime, um, you know, protection with this Versa Court. And then we had a choice of redoing the entire court for 500,000. At the time, with what was presented to us, we had the, this was the best choice. What was neglected from this discussion was the fact that, as Commissioner Kuyas says about the morning dew, it's best suited to be used in a place where it's either going to be used in the afternoon or it's going to be used on a private tennis court. I did make calls because I knew what Versa Court was going to give us. I called private locations. They will give us the exact same amount as Versa Court. Um, and I don't think we would have that clause to sign with a private company. So, um, as I'm hearing that that was the stickler, I would be happy, it doesn't have to be me to do it. We could have our own, uh, I'll get Janina over there who's, uh, to, to try to work a deal. I, I didn't mean to throw it on you, Janina, but, um, we love you. Um, I, I just think that we could do better, um, even if we do the same amount, at least we won't have to get into this because we do have to disclose it. You know, we're a public records situation and we just can't not, uh, disclose what we do. It kind of, how do you, how do you make a deal and have a non-disclosure, uh, to sign? It's just, it's illegal. So, you know, it, it doesn't matter whether we, whether they offer us 30,000, 10,000, 50,000, we can't sign it because of the clause. So I didn't know why this was being, the can kicked down the road. Now I know. But like I said, we do have someone who actually, um, what he did was he went on Google Earth. He took the picture of the tennis courts. He gave me, I, I think it was like a dollar 26 per square. And when I did my calculation, it came out to $30,000. And the only reason I didn't want to, you know, go with him was I, I just said, you know, that's what Versa Court's giving us, but I didn't realize Versa Court has this clause. So I think we could pursue a different venue. We should get it up off the ground. And, um, they also specifically asked us, before we do this, to load it onto SKIDS in a certain way. They have a video, um, how to do it so that, you know, the product doesn't get damaged. And, uh, you know, they, they would be happy to sell it for us. So there is other avenues that we don't have to deal with Versa Court, um, because honestly, with what's on the table, we can't do it, period. I mean, we're, we're stuck. You know, we want to do it, we can't sign a contract because Versa Court wants a non-disclosure clause and we can't sign that. So that just leaves us in limbo unless we go to a private person. But that's, so that's my take on it. I'd rather, um, try to get it sold privately, whether we, whether this guy sells it to, um, you know, somebody's tennis court in the back of their house in Minnesota or wherever he's going to sell it, that, you know, they don't have that morning dew. Um, you know, we weren't presented that these Versa Courts come with built-in rubber on them. They come with all different composites. We were not told any of this. They, we just got this and that's what we got, so. Can, uh, go ahead, public comment? Yeah, let's go to, uh, public comments on this. Not to, not to, uh, dissuade further public comment and I, you, sir, I know you've been patient, so you can speak, but I think you can kind of see the count here, so I don't know that we need to overspeak on it, but please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I'll shorten my 15-minute speech to one minute. No, no, seriously, thanks. Clearly you guys are hearing the feedback that we've all been, uh, giving to you guys about the playability of these, these courts. Um, I am an avid tennis player, playing three to four times a week, and these are by far the worst surface I've ever played on, um, compared to, you know, poor quality concrete surfaces with cracks and clay courts. Um, in addition to it being slick, um, because they're squares, if a ball lands in perfectly in the middle of the square, it'll actually trampoline up. If it lands in an intersection of the squares, it's a dud. You hear like a click sound. So not only is it dangerous, is it slippery in the morning dew or after a rain shower, um, also just generally the playability is, is pretty poor. Um, if you hit any balls with spin, they slide. They don't bite like they would on a traditional tennis court that has grit on it. So overall, playability is very poor, just to give you some context from a, from a tennis player. Um, in addition, I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention the timing element of this. Um, you know, what we do with it is obviously in question who gets it, but I mean, if there's a way to get it off the courts as soon as possible, stack it in some corner or warehouse and then figure out what to do with it, that'd be incredible. Because I just, I could see this potentially lingering on, um, as we try to figure out what the, the best thing to do with this court is. And in the meantime, um, there's injury risk and then there's just general, you know, lack of us being able to use our courts that we've had for, for many years. Um, so yeah, that's just the one point I wanted to make is the timing. Whatever we need to do, got to get the plastic off the courts as quickly as possible, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Almond, I'm with him. Um, I just also wanted to say that, you know, it was, it was great having these four courts. Obviously we're getting extra congestion, extra wear and tear on Craig Park. And for those of us that were used to driving 10 minutes to, um, Riverside to play, we're now having to drive to Holiday or to Dunedin. And I don't even think we're supposed to be using those courts because we're Tarpon Springs residents, we're not Dunedin residents, and now we're clogging that up. So, um, like Eric said, the timing is a big deal. And if you play in any sort of leagues, your options for surfaces include hard courts and clay and maybe grass, but I don't know any grass. I can't, you know, schedule a meeting with, schedule a, something with an opponent and have them come play on plastic because they're like, should I wear my hard shoes or my clay shoes? And I'm like, about that, no. Like, so just wanted to add that there are other complications and other things going on in our everyday life that, you know, we used to be a lot easier and now we're, we're basically commuting to play tennis. Thank you.
So, uh, let's, uh, let's come back to the board and, um, let's, I'd like to entertain a motion to pull the surface off the court, um, and then let the city manager explore the options, uh, after that.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Can I follow up with some information?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, staff and maybe Bob, by these courts being, or the, the Versa Courts being removed, are the surfaces ready to be playable?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen the condition in a long time. I would, I would assume not. So we would probably have to take a next phase.
What we need to do is amend that motion to, uh, either remove the courts, but also have staff come back with an update on some possible costs to finish the courts in a certain manner.
Okay. Would, uh, would, will you pull your second on that?
Yes, yes. This doesn't, this doesn't need to be part of the motion, but I don't know, seasonally tennis, but I assume this is the least favorite time because it's hot as hell.
Right.
So we should do it pretty quickly. So it, it is ready for the, the cooler months, but yes, amend that as such.
So the motion will be to pull the cer, the plastic surface up, the Versa Court up, and to, uh, have staff, uh, come back to us sooner than later for, uh, uh, options on what we can do with the courts.
Yes.
And, and obviously you'll be able to assess them once the surface is off. Uh, I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second, yes? Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Yes.
We already got priced to, to repair it at 100 grand. That was one of the decisions.
Okay.
Just so you know, I mean, that's what it was. I don't think it changed any. You know, it was 100,000 to fix all the cracks. That's what it was.
All right. I know, but that was about a year ago. You know how prices are. We just, we got to see what it looks like. But yeah, I support that.
They'll come back. Okay, let's go to, uh, business item number 20. Wow. See? City government.
I get booed, thank you.
The people have spoken and we listened. Okay, item 20, authorize city manager to execute Form DR 420, Form DR 420 TIF and Form DR 420 MMP. Uh, Finance Director Herring.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Ron Herring, Finance Director. Florida Statute 200.065 sets of procedures for the adoption of the millage rate. The DR 420 document establishes a maximum millage rate for fiscal year 2026. I'm recommending to authorize the city manager to sign Form DR 420 at the maximum millage rate of 5.37, which is the same rate as the current rate. With that, I'll leave for any questions.
Are there any questions? Uh, Commissioner Banther? Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, unless there's some public comment, uh, I forgot to go to Zoom, but, um, is there any Zoom comment? Mr. Austin? Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, uh, item number 20?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Number 21, award file, uh, 250202, uh, job order construction services. Uh, Ms. Janina Lewis, Lewis, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Excuse me. Um, the item before you is to request the use of job order contracting services in the state of Florida utilizing our Omnia Partners contract. Um, the lead on that was Pinellas County Schools. Uh, this particular job ordering contract services provides for small construction projects and an efficient delivery method that allows us to have selection of multiple qualified contractors and a fixed price list catalog. Uh, we've used this over the past two years and we've had some pretty successful projects. Uh, the latest projects are listed in the back. Uh, we did a water treatment, uh, canopy from one of the tanks. We have also paved the parking lot outside of the water conveyance offices in the back, which turned out really nice. And we are currently working on the Union Academy facility. And with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Are there any questions, uh, Ms. Lewis? No, not a question. I just wanted to thank you. That's a amazing idea. It's great to have it moved from, you know, so quickly. Um, you, it, it, some of these projects would, doesn't have to come before us. These are things that you can handle, so thank you. I, I actually wrote down, it was a great idea, so appreciate it. Are there any, um, uh, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's come back to the board for a motion to approve, uh, item number 22, award file, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, 21, award file, job order construction services?
So moved.
Started.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Uh, item number 22, award file number 250216, ladder truck, uh, Fire Chief?
Good evening, Scott Young Fire Chief. Uh, we bring forward to you a request to, the city to purchase a new ladder truck to replace the one we have now, the 2020. Uh, how this would work is the trucks are taking 50 months plus to be built once you order them. Our current truck is five years old, a little over five. Um, so this truck would be about, our current truck would be about 10 years old when this one finally arrives. We rotate our ladder trucks out every 10 years because of, uh, the maintenance costs and wear and tear on them. Uh, we also, it also keeps us in compliance with NFPA, uh, guidelines. Uh, well, the price of this truck, uh, will come out to be 1.6 million dollars. Uh, right now, the, they are offering us, um, $450,000 for the current ladder truck once the new one is delivered. So we're at a point where the cost of the new ladder truck's going to go up and the depreciation on our truck is going to go down. So we're in that middle point right now. Uh, there's no cost, no money out front right now until the truck is delivered. Uh, we have it set up that the, uh, penny fund will be, uh, funding this truck. Uh, the finance directors will put $400,000 away, uh, each year for the next four years, so we have cash when the truck is, uh, delivered. Uh, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Okay. Let's go to, um, Commissioner, uh, questions of the Fire Chief. And I have no questions. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
No questions.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Where's the, uh, enterprise fund, uh, impact fees come from? You can't use some of that?
That would be a Finance Director's question.
Just curious.
Uh, yes, you can use some of the impact fees. Uh, we have about 300,000 in there. So yes, you can use those if we need to.
Okay.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No, I had a good talk with Chief earlier. He explained it all and honestly, the, with the trading in the old one and what we'll get for it, the, you know, the difference makes sense for us. So it's good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I also had a conversation with the Fire Chief and I have no questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Mr. Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay. We come back to the board for a motion to approve?
Second.
Without any further comments, um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay. Business item number 23, approve joint use agreements with Pinellas County School District. Uh, Mr. Keiger?
Uh, thank you. Um, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. Uh, we have before you today two agreements. Uh, these are historic joint use agreements that we've had in place with Pinellas County School Board since, uh, 1989. Uh, we will point out, uh, one of the agreements did expire in 2020 and wasn't renewed. It was likely due to confusion during the early days of the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, but these, uh, these practices have been in place for a long time and it allows for joint use of, uh, our recreation facilities and parking areas, uh, as well as the, uh, the school boards by city facilities and for city events. So, um, these are long-running agreements that we've had in place and we recommend that they be renewed. And, uh, we also have, uh, Jamie Taylor, our Recreation Superintendent here in case we have any detailed questions about programming or the nature of the use of these facilities.
Does any Commissioner have any questions of Mr. Keiger?
I do. Quick question. So are we going to be, um, letting them, uh, the school use parking lots and we're going to use school properties? Is that what it's about?
This is a long-running practice. So, uh, like, for example, um, this allows the school board to use, like, our community center for, like, youth basketball practices is one, uh, ongoing practice. Um, another thing is we use the high school parking lot for, like, overflow park, parking and for shuttle service during Sunset Beach concert series and that's.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
We also use the, uh, school, um, uh, parking lot for, um, uh, like, dropping off of, uh, of electronics and other things, like, our, during New Year as well, so. Um, okay. Do we have any public comments on this item? Mr. Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay. Come back to the board for a motion to approve?
Second.
If there's no further comments, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, number 24, ratification of Cultural and Civic Services Director. Ms. Atkins, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Tabitha Atkins, new HR Director here for the city. Uh, before you guys, we have, um, the, uh, ratification of the appointment of Brandon Grock from the Marketing Operations Manager to the Director of Cultural and Civic Services. Uh, this will be effective August 7th, 2025. Um, this is to replace the current Director who is retiring from her position after 10 years. Um, Brandon has been in his current position since 2021, um, has done a phenomenal job leading our marketing program, has a total of about 15 years' experience in management of entertainment venues, um, and prior coming to Tarpon. He spent about 10 years at Ruth Eckert Hall in Clearwater. Um, you guys can see from his resume that he has, uh, been a key component in helping Tarpon Arts improve revenue, ticket sales, and grant funding. And we feel like Brandon would be a exceptional qualified candidate for this position and highly recommend him.
Okay. Do we have any, uh, questions from, uh, our, the Commission, uh, to Ms. Atkins? Do we have any public comments? Uh, Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay. I'd like to come back to the board for a, a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We want to thank Diane too, all her hard work and congratulations, Brandon.
Yes. Congratulations, Diane.
Item number 25, uh, ratification of Public Works Director. Let's make this one stick. Um, do you, do you want to, are you, are you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so we are asking for the ratification to hire Chris Cotta into the position of Public Works Director. Um, upon approval, Chris will be relocating here from his current position as the Director of Public Works in the coastal community of Petersburg, Alaska. Uh, he's been serving as the Director there since 2018, where he is responsible for water and wastewater utilities, streets, bleeds, sanitation, and building maintenance. Chris has over 20 years' supervisory experience, including 10 years as the Assistant Public Works Director in Petersburg. Uh, Chris brings a wide range of experience and expertise and will feel he'll be an excellent candidate for this role. And yes, we hope this one.
Thank you. Okay. Let's, uh, have staff question, I mean, Commission questions. Um, so, City Manager, is he good?
I believe so.
All right. Can you, you give him a thumbs up?
I give him a thumbs up.
All right. Good. Okay. Commissioner Banther?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Uh, congratulations to a new Public Works Director. I know he wanted to come back to Florida and, uh, picked up a lot warmer place than where he was coming from. So awesome.
Vice Mayor? I have no questions, thank you. All right. Uh, any public comments? Mr. Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to come back to the board for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Uh, item number 27, Orange Street Reconstruction Project Alternatives. Um, Mr. Robertson?
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director and interim Public Works Director. For this item, we're seeking the board's direction on the design options to include in the reconstruction of East Orange Street. Um, I've given you a lot of information in your backup to process, so, uh, let me try to unpack it a bit for discussion tonight. I have presented six conceptual alternatives for your consideration. Each option consists of the following elements, looking at the project boundaries, uh, waterline replacement within the project, roadway width, landscaping and lighting, and some other minor things. Um, I want to focus on the boundaries for a second and I'm going to draw your attention to the screen, or at least, uh, page 13, if you want to use the PDF. The, the project was originally intended to address Orange Street between Pinellas and Safford. That would be in this box here. And I'm going to make that much thicker so we can see that. I guess I'm not. Okay. Um, I get it. There we go. So from Pinellas to Safford, that was the original project, uh, extent. Um, it, this section is entirely brick and is in bad shape. Uh, a previous board asked us to look at expanding the project boundary to include, uh, this section of Orange Street between Ring and Safford. It's an asphalt section. It's still in pretty good shape. Um, the next consideration is utilities within a quarter. Or anytime we do redo a road, we want to consider utilities. Um, the sanitary sewer in this section is in good shape, so we don't need to replace that. But there is an existing six-inch galvanized water line. It's an old pipe. We want to replace that, um, uh, as part of the project. Uh, third consideration is the roadway width. Uh, associated with that would be parking that we can fit within the roadway. Uh, there are five options of the six proposed, leaving the width as is. One proposes widening it and I'll get into these alternatives here in a minute. Um, other considerations are whether to include additional trees and landscaping, um, upgrading on our street lighting. There is existing street lighting on the north side now. Um, adjusting the parking configuration and whether the intersection of Hibiscus at Orange should be a four-way stop. That was a, an item that, uh, previous board wanted to emphasize. Um, we can always look at that when we get through the detailed design. Uh, so you don't need to really decide that now, but, um, something we, we should consider, I think, for safety. Um, the last thing I want to point out, uh, we point, we, we posted the first three alternatives on Connect Tarpon Springs and got feedback from 159 respondents, public, public comment, uh, public input, most, most of whom supported alternative two or three. And again, I'm going to tell you what those are all about here in a second. Um, so what you're looking at on the screen here, this is alternative one. And what this does is it, uh, replaces all the bricks. It keeps the same existing roadway width. It's a complete tear up. Um, and it's, uh, we, we think we could salvage roughly 90% of the bricks, plus or minus. Uh, so we don't have to import about 10% of, for the damage of broken ones. It's always nice to be able to retain the historic bricks if we can. Um, this alternative also includes the paving of, of this section, as I mentioned earlier. Um, it includes the water line and I think those are the major issues or, uh, major items it addresses. It also includes some curb replacement. Uh, that comes in at right around just under 1.4 million. Um, these are some, uh, angled shots to kind of get an idea, some cross-sections, um, of, of what the, the road would look like. I want to point out that existing drive aisle is nine feet wide, um, which is too narrow. It does not meet fire code. It needs to be 10 feet, each total of 20 feet. So that's something we're going to need to have to address. Uh, we might have to stagger parking if we were to keep this width, but it, we can work around it. Um, alternative two is, uh, similar to alternative one, uh, except that, uh, it does include some lighting improvements. Um, I know it's hard to see, but it also includes, um, some additional landscaping, some trees, um, kind of redoing these bulb outs that are existing there. And, uh, it keeps the same roadway width as the first alternative. Um, the, the nine, nine-foot lanes, uh, does include the water line. And this one comes in at right around 1.8 million. Um, alternative three is an option that allows us to widen the road. It takes a look at the, um, the bulb out areas here in this section that are east of Hibiscus and pushes those back. Again, we're still within city right-of-way. Um, but what that does is it widens the road and, and I'll show you. It gives us, um, 12 and a half foot lanes through that narrow section instead of nine foot. So, um, what we're looking for from, from you tonight is primarily, um, the extent. Where, where you want the project to start and stop. If we're going to Pinellas to Safford, or do we also want to include that section of asphalt between Safford and Ring? So the extent and then the width of the project. All the other details, I think what we, what we'll do is, once we get through the detailed design, uh, we'll come back to you for final approval. I think, uh, Charles, I'd like to, we, we talked about putting it out, out, uh, on Connect Tarpon one more time after we've got a little bit more detailed information. Um, we, you know, we, we did get a lot of comments. They were kind of all over the place. A lot of people supported widening it. A lot of people didn't want to widen it. Uh, some people wanted landscaping. Some people were concerned about parking. Some people wanted angled parking, perpendicular parking. So I want to consider all those things. It's hard to do all that with this many alternatives to think about. So with your guidance, we'll, we'll put together a more detailed design to factor in what the public's, the public input has given us. Charles?
And just to add, the, the reason we're bringing this forward is, um, this has been in the, um, was it in the general fund?
It was, and now it's in CRA.
We're moving it, we're recommending you move it to the CRA because it's a good CRA project for, for next fiscal year for construction. So we figure we, we get a final design now. We've got a few months to get the design portion phase completed so we can do construction next fiscal year.
And I did fail to mention the price on alternative three. When we widen the road, it does increase the cost quite a bit. Looking at this one where we're, alternative three takes the paving into account, the asphalt, that one's coming in at around 2.5 million. Commissioner Cuyas, you, you and I talked about an additional option. Would you like me to present that or did you want to mention it?
Sure, please.
Okay. So, uh, Commissioner's idea was also, was to consider a version of alternative three where we, we just focus on the brick section only and we widen the road. It kind of gives us the best of both worlds. It's still going to be expensive. It's still looking at, our estimate's around 2.2 million instead of the 2.5. But if you want us to look at that option, that's something we can do as well. So with that.
Okay. We'll go to, uh, Commission, uh, questions and I'll go, I'll go first on this. Um, let me ask you, if we do the widening, does that require any eminent domain?
No, that's all still within city right-of-way.
It's all right-of-way, is it?
Yes, sir.
And, um, you know, the part from, uh, Safford to Ring, um, have, you might, before we move on that, I, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Kokolakis owns all that property there. And we'd probably want to find out what he, his intentions are because we'd hate to go in and repave that, that stretch and then him bring in heavy equipment. Again, I don't know if that is, is a concern. But it may be, uh, you know, worth, uh, communicating with him.
Sure.
And finding out what his intentions are and whether he's moving on that soon or not. Um, and the, uh, and the City Manager already clarified that, uh, this is being most likely moved to CRA. So, uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Robertson, the last one you mentioned from Commissioner Cuyas caught my attention. Explain to me again the difference between this, I guess, fourth alternative and alternative three.
So the difference is really we're just cutting off that paved section on, between Ring and Safford.
Is that the one that you like, you like the best?
Well, i- if, if we had all the money in the world, I think this one would probably be the most ideal because it seems to solve most concerns.
If you had all the money or if we didn't have all the money?
I did. I had all the money.
So that, so that's, that could, because, because the first few options, unless I misheard, were in the one-point, like, section, not the two-point section, correct?
The one-point, yes, that's right.
So what's the difference again between, so say we do, say we, you know, is there a way that we just focus on the brick part but lessen the cost? What, what's the cost difference that's adding the cost to, to, to over 2 million?
For this one, it's, it's the widening. It's the removing all the existing curb, rebuilding all the, uh, driveway aprons, redoing the sidewalk. There's a lot of concrete work that's involved in this one.
Do we have the CRA money for that?
Um, that's a question for Charles and the Finance Director. I know we've got 990,000 in it now.
I think our, in our current draft, we have about 1.1 million. Uh, that's proposed for this project. And then there's, there's still about 1.9 million in CRA funds that'll, are be for, for the, when the master plan's complete. So it's kind of undesignated, but it's for master plan projects. This will be in the master plan. So that's, we have about 1.9 million, um, that we could, I'd hate to designate a million of it to this one little block, but it's a possibility.
Right. Well, I mean, it's a great street. We have, we have, we have one of our fam, one of, one of, one of our family offices off that street and I know it does get very busy. Um, I think the, I think a four-way stop is a good idea for, for, for Hibiscus. I don't, and I don't advocate for those very often. The ones on Tarpon Avenue have, I think, caused a lot of issues. Um, so I'm definitely, I, I, I like this kind of fourth alternative if we have the money for it. Um, you know, if not, then, you know, the next best thing, but I'll see what my colleagues have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I too am concerned about cost, but I'm also concerned with it being done properly. Often I've seen in the history of redoing brick streets that they don't always hold up, but it depends on how it's done. So I think with the right specifications, we can do that. And I think that what Commissioner Koulias has suggested might be the best alternative. I, I don't necessarily think one's enough. Two and three is where I tend to lean. I'm worried about the money and where it comes from. I will also say for record, for those of you that would worry about us depleting the CRA funds, that annually we deposit funds back into that account. So I don't want anybody to think that we're zeroing out our CRA money because there will be additional funds coming to that. So I will go to the wishes of the commission, but I tend to think that Commissioner Koulias' suggestion was a good one.
Commissioner Koulias?
No, I just thank you for the presentation, Mr. Robinson, and thanks, Board members, for considering it. The reason why I harp on that one section from Hibiscus to Safford because it's the one section where you see there's the most right-of-way that's, we don't have. And by widening that by two, three feet, we all know First Fridays, that is the main artery going in and out to both the east-west side of town. As Mr. Robinson stated, by doing that alternative three just in that section, we would be compliant for, you know, emergency vehicles to be able to go through. And anyone sees what that's like on First Fridays, it's important. And also, there is a parking lot that we do lease, you know, but we don't know if that's certain forever. That could end from year to year. Add some additional parking on that one side and we can widen the road. Bob, if you can consider not minimal in the landscape, I mean, just a little strip of grass if needed, a couple of trees, obviously some lights, but try to keep the cost down on that side of, there's been some new homes and stuff that have done a good job as well as maintaining their importance and cleanliness of the right-of-way. So I'd like to see a little hybrid of some of the alternatives mixed, but please consider the widening part from that section as it's very important for the community, emergency vehicles and congestion during one of those, once a month. And so, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Bob, why, where does the six-inch galvanized run, the whole distance?
It runs primarily underneath all the brick section.
But all the way down to Ring?
Yes, between Ring and Pinellas.
Do you have any idea what the condition of that is?
As a general rule, any galvanized pipe is too old to, let me rephrase, it needs to be replaced whenever we have a chance to.
I figured that, and that's, I'm in agreement to what Commissioner Koulias said, and I was leaning towards three. Of course, the finances are what restricts you. I also made, you know, I also asked the city manager to put the reasons for the survey in there because, you know, most of the people were wanting number two. And I wanted to see whether they were valuable answers or whether it was, you know, sometimes we just get very interesting comments, is all I'm going to say. So I figured everybody would get to look at them and judge them for themselves. So I'm in agreement to three. I did recently just drive through there. It definitely, what we could do is widening that street to 12 feet. In that one, you also have on the curbed corners where it juts out nine feet. I would prefer if it jumps out eight feet. Because our parking spots are eight feet. We don't need nine feet. That just restricts a foot on each side and makes a little bit of a bottleneck. I'd rather it be straight. The street between Hibiscus and Safford is the worst there is. So we do have to make that wider. And as was said on First Friday, if you've ever gone by there, you could lose side mirrors. It's ridiculous. So we do need to add that extra feet to 12 feet. I do think unless we could reline the pipe, I would like to pull the asphalt while we're doing it or it'll never get done. I'm going to, I'm just saying, I'll bite the bullet. I don't want to spend the other half a million dollars, but we're there. And to tear it up again, but I also agree with what the mayor said, we need to speak to Kokolakis and see what his, because if he's going to do any sort of work there, I don't want to have to do that roadway twice.
Right.
So before we actually go through this whole procedure, I'd like to have all my eyes dotted and Ts crossed, but widening it is the thing. But, you know, like I said, I know it's very small, but those jut-outs on each corner, why do we need those?
Yeah, those, those are a purpose, a purpose to maintain the site triangle so cars don't park up close to the edge.
I know.
And so it prevents people from parking up close to a stop sign so you can see around a corner. That's, that's a pretty important thing. And I don't mind, I think your suggestion is fine, drop them down to eight feet. I think that works because it keeps larger vehicles from bumping up against them when they make those turns, but.
Most of the cars are six, six, seven feet. If we have an eight-foot, we're making that a nine-foot. So, you know, I know it protects the cars only at that corner. Once they drive down, if they're texting, they're going to catch somebody's mirror any which way. So I just, to me, it's a hindrance. And I know some of the people put down that it was going to be, they wanted to slow the traffic down for safety. You know, that's a main road. You know, people coming up Spring Bayou, for the Spring Bayou, they'll either turn on Hibiscus, turn on Safford. We have to make that at least a secondary roadway to Tarpon Avenue. But I am, I am hesitant to want to change the six-inch galvanized, but if we, if he's not going to do anything to it, I'd like to spend that extra money and just get it in one full pipe rather than do this twice.
I agree. And if I could make a suggestion.
Even though I understand the money wise.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
If I could make a suggestion, Mayor, if you don't mind, to the Vice Mayor. One thing we could do is we could put the paving of this section as an additive alternate to the bid. So if it fits within our budget, then the board has the ability to approve that included with the award to the contractor, or you could, you could leave it out if our funds don't cover it.
Well, these are also estimates, right?
At this point, yes, sir.
Yeah. Because, you know, what I said to the city manager was some of these estimates, and I'm talking about even the design, I couldn't see the difference in the prices of the design. It was way too much for three.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Because there's, what's different? We just got to take out the curb, bump it back. There's the sewer on Safford has to be moved, but all the lighting is fine, all the poles are fine. They all line up with where Kokolakis's place is. So nothing has to be moved. We don't have to move any, any Duke Energy lines. The only thing we have to move is that sewer on that corner. That's it.
Yeah.
The stormwater.
Well, I do have to do more survey. I've got to do more geotech under the areas where we'll be digging. There's a little bit more involved in design, but I will tell you this, the design numbers here are estimates. They're based on 15% of the construction cost only. I will be negotiating the design cost with our engineer after you tell me what scope of work you want me to do.
Okay. Like I said, that's the route I want to go. I just think some of these things are a little excessive as far as pricing for what needs to be done, but I'm leaning on three. As, and either way, whether it does it, whether we go into Ring, you know, that extra section, I think it's wise to do while we're there, but otherwise, you know, whatever.
Let's, is there any public comments on this item?
I need to approach 901 Bayshore Drive. I hope you take into consideration and do this in the summer instead of the wintertime. Traffic, Greek Easter, and Epiphany. Tradition has been, they've always walked down Orange Street. They couldn't go on Safford and they come around Ring. It's been that way for years. And in the summer, that will not interfere with the Greek church. It will not interfere with the heavy winter traffic. It'll be hot, but it can be done in the summer. I think that would be very advantageous for the city. Something to think about.
Good idea. Any other comments?
Zev Atkinson, 621 East Orange. I just, I had a question. Wasn't this at the rec? Did you guys put this at the rec to let people see it?
Yeah, we did do that. We had a public meeting.
Yeah, I thought I saw it there. You mentioned that you got 100 and some odd people from Connect that did the survey. What was the number of people that filled out the information that was at the rec?
I don't recall.
Okay, but it wasn't taken, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Austin?
No hands up at this time.
Okay, let's come back to the board. Commissioner Koulias, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for, to go with alternative three with staff to come back with options for cost to include the Safford to Ring Avenue as well and without.
Sure. Okay. So let's have Commissioner comments. So I'm in agreement that, you know, we don't want to do this project without widening that road. It would, it would be a waste. So Commissioner Banther?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I'm tired with the way the vision's made.
Commissioner Koulias?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Okay, so let's have roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No longer do I have to check the shocks in my truck, yes.
Mayor Koulias?
Yes.
Good job, thank you.
Okay, let's go to item 28. City Attorney, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 202550, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the mission of the nonprofit Solar and Energy Loan Fund in the City of Tarpon Springs, providing consent to Solar and Energy Loan Fund for the use of the city's seal and providing for an effective date hereof.
Okay, Mr. Keiger, if you want to make your presentation?
Yes, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. This is a really great program that we're proposing and this was brought through the Sustainability Program. So with that in mind, tonight we've got our Sustainability Coordinator, Ms. Holly Langston, to present to you on this project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Holly Langston, Sustainability Coordinator. So this is a very brief presentation. Let's see here. Wrong thing. Doesn't really matter. Sorry, this is an awkward, unhyped for me. All right, we'll just do it like this. Okay. No, it's okay. So what is SELF? That is the question, right? So SELF, Solar and Energy Loan Fund. This is Florida's first green bank. It is, they're a 501(c)(3) organization and a certified community development financial institution. Their mission is to rebuild and empower underserved communities by providing access to affordable and innovative financing for sustainability property improvements with the primary focus on energy efficiency, renewable energy, and climate resilience in low and moderate-income neighborhoods. They strive to create positive social, economic, and environmental impacts by helping people improve the health, safety, and quality of life in their homes while reducing operating costs and the benefit of greenhouse gas emissions reductions. So what does SELF offer and why would the city want to support it? So what SELF does is, they are an alternative financing mechanism to traditional banks. So they have programs that are, their applicants are not approved based on their credit score, but rather their ability to pay. They have special lending programs for veterans, for seniors, female head of household, disabled persons, low-income homeowners, as well as those with poor credit. So homeowners can apply for resilience loans to improve the properties, for better recovery after storms, of course, as well as just general home improvements. Landlords can apply. They do have a special category of hurricane relief loans. And they also have a program where local contractors can apply to become a trusted contractor through them and be referred to essentially take some of the applicants once they're approved. So what are some of the home loans that they, they approve? I think it's over a dozen different types of home loans, but essentially roofing, windows, doors. Again, it's storm resilience, weatherization, energy efficiency improvements. So that could be lighting, that could be solar if someone chose to apply for that. And then again, health and safety. So I know like during the summer months, they have air conditioning special that they've been doing to obviously help people stay comfortable in their homes if perhaps they've had a problem with their system. So this is just a great resource that people can tap into. That is, again, a non-traditional lending option. So they've actually done over $50 million in total loans now. They have a very low default rate. They work very closely with their applicants and kind of every case is an individual case. They work closely with City of St. Petersburg, Tampa, Hillsborough County, lots of local and again across Florida, other cities and counties are kind of partnered with them or just support their programming. And again, contractors also can benefit by being involved. So it's really wide-ranging, over 10,000 people have updated their homes in the state of Florida. So really amazing, wide-reaching. So what are we asking? We're really just asking for the support of the Board of Commissioners to say, yes, this is a resource that we want our residents to know about. SELF would then be able to put our city's seal on their website and say that, you know, we are a city that supports what they are offering. And we would just generally, you know, publicize this so that residents in the city know about it because I think it's kind of an underutilized resource. So we have a sustainability newsletter, we would put it there. We have, of course, been working on updating our webpages. So really just getting it out through our various city departments that work closely with the public and putting public outreach for it. And then the benefits, of course, very wide-ranging. People can increase their home equity, increase their living conditions, obviously healthier, safer, more comfortable, cost-effective, so they could be saving money with putting in more energy-efficient appliances. And then storm resilience, reducing operating costs, and just peace of mind that people know that there's something they can go to, you know, as sort of a different option for funding should they not have the finances to do something on their own. And just one side note is that no one is excluded. While they do focus on low and moderate income, other people can also apply. And again, they do have those special programs for certain categories of applicants. So that is really it. Thank you for your attention and for hanging in there tonight.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions on this matter. I know we discussed it this morning, so I got all the information I need. Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I'm good.
Commissioner Koulias?
Looks like a great program for the community. Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes, thank you for bringing this up, but I have no questions on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments? Mr. Austin?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay, I'd like to come back to the board for a motion.
So moved.
Second. With that said, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes all the items. Let's go to board and staff comments. Assistant Chief?
No comment.
City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
City Manager?
Just a couple of things. We passed out, passed around a letter, a thank you letter to Congresswoman Luna for her help in getting the urban forestry grant that paid for the plan. I hope everyone signed that. Also let you know that I'm taking vacation next month. I won't be at the next meeting. Chief Young is going to sit in for me. I'll be in Brazil, so I won't be able to, I'll be able to watch you on YouTube, but I won't be able to, tell me I can't access my email. And then also, I'm going to make, put in your mailbox an evaluation form for myself. It's, be time for my annual review at the second meeting in August, so that'll be on the agenda. If you could fill those out and bring them into Trish and what, I don't know how you've handled it here in the past, but what I was used to was the mayor would then accumulate them and kind of summarize them at the meeting if that works for everybody.
We didn't do that.
Didn't do that?
We didn't do that. No, everything was separate.
Everything was separate. However you want to do it, but it'll be, the review will be on the second meeting in August. And then I've sent out an invitation for a workshop for next week to workshop the pay plan. Hopefully we can get that done and I think we'll have lunch available for you and then we'll work through that and hopefully get that completed so we can finalize that part of the budget.
Thank you.
If you have any lunch preferences, let us know.
I'll just bring my own. I eat the same thing every day, so.
City Clerk?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Banther?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Just want to thank all those that came tonight and they aren't here now, but I, for one, enjoyed the presentations and I agree with you, Mayor, that it's nice to be able to do that while people are still here. So I am grateful for that and just want to continue the good work and get things done. Thank you.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes, we had a good meeting tonight. I do want to let this board know, I did try to talk with the city manager. It was last minute to try to bring an agenda item to have this loan that we talk about within our budget go to referendum. And so we have our city attorney who's going to be looking at it now. And after he looks into all the information, hopefully we can bring it forward and I'll present my case because I just think it's important that we try to get the citizens' vote on this type of loan. So other than that, it's a great meeting, great honoring these people who've contributed to the community and thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I need to clarify a couple of things. I know we all got a letter and there's things in that letter that just were not 100% true. So I wanted to just clear the air and first, I'd like to say that I singled out nobody. Anybody that would send me any sort of a letter that states they don't live in the city of Tarpon, I would call out, whether it's the Commissioner, whether it's the city manager, whether it be anybody. So if you're going to send me anything that states that, I will definitely always bring it up. But I also want you to know that the person that I didn't speak of and didn't name anybody, I also was instrumental in encouraging the person to join a board. I was the person who appointed her. And so I don't know why it was turned around. There is a three-member board and if that person is a full-fledged member, it's three member. If they're not a full-fledged member, it's two. So two cannot be a quorum and that is why I voted against it. It had nothing to do with moving the project or not moving the project. It had to do whether it was a legitimate quorum board. If anybody took anything other than what I'm saying, I apologize because that was not my intention. But like I said, again, if anybody sends me anything that says they don't live in Tarpon, I would be happy to go through and I did with Ask Irene and the city clerk to try to clarify it before the meeting. And truthfully, I got the clarification at the end of the meeting is when I got it. So just for the record, nobody tried to single anybody out, nobody tried to call anybody out, and I definitely didn't call anybody any names. So I appreciate all the volunteer boards of what they do. And once again, I'm going to repeat it, I was the one who encouraged her to join the board. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
I too enjoyed tonight's honoring of the people we did and if, you know, anyone else has any people of worthy honoring, then they can bring it here, just like I did with the the two sisters. I was out running on Saturday morning and at the corner of Gulf Road and North Florida Avenue, there was a little man who had a walker. He was sitting on the sidewalk. He had fallen over and there was two officers there helping him. Christine and I don't know the other one. If you could find who else was on duty that at that corner, they were so kind to this man and it, you know, our police, you know, have to deal with the tough stuff, but they're soft when they have to be. And Assistant Chief, please find out who they are and please commend them for their kindness. They couldn't have been more kind to that that elderly gentleman and it's just, again, how much we love our our police officers and what they do and I can't say enough about them. With that said, adjourn the meeting at 9:36.
I called it, I called it. I said 9930. I said 9930, I did.